Good evening. I'd like to call the January ninth regular meeting of the Board of Education to order. Ms. Hitt, would you call the role, please?
Mrs. Spelter?
Present.
Mrs. Martin?
Present.
Mr. McKeon?
Here.
Mr. Parker?
Here.
Mr. Polan?
Here.
Mr. Shear?
Dr. Daniels?
Here. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will begin our evening with information and presentations, and we are going to have food services this evening. Welcome.
Good evening. We appreciate the opportunity to be here this evening. Presenting along with me this evening will be Cindy Jones, our Business Management Coordinator, Lori Carpenter, our Human Resources Coordinator, and Nicole Burnett, our Nutrition Coordinator. Many of you probably have heard me say over the years how we are the largest restaurant in Johnson County. Well, we still are. As the district grows, we continue to grow. But we serve over four million meals every school year now in 54 locations with 275 employees. And to do that, it requires about $13 million. We're actually structured much like a corporate office of a chain restaurant. We have a Human Resources area, purchasing, food production, menu planning, catering, transportation, finance, technology support, maintenance department, custodial, and our State and Federal Program Administration. Now, the last one, the State and Federal Program Administration area, that certainly is unique to school food services. That's the area where we process all of the free and reduced applications that are used across the district. Now, the four million meals that we serve each year, those are served under a number of USDA nutrition programs. We participate in the National School Lunch Program, the School Breakfast Program, the Special Milk Program, which is commonly known as kindergarten milk, and the Summer Breakfast and Lunch Program. Now, in addition to these reimbursement-type nutrition programs, we also provide meals to Head Start and three private schools that are in the area. Now, with such a large operation, food services really needs a large support building. And the Food Production Center has provided that support and has served that role well for many years. But as I said, as the district grows, our need for space has also grown. And we are very, very fortunate to have the Food Production Center building addition, which is currently under construction. And this will provide the space that we need, not only right now, but far into the future. It'll provide much-needed warehouse space, additional freezer and refrigerated storage space, additional truck bays, and a more functional, larger maintenance shop and laundry facility. And all of these things are going to allow us to continue to maintain, excuse me, to maintain our efficiencies, and hopefully, we'll be able to increase those efficiencies. Obviously, budget is a big deal with us. We have to make sure we make ends meet, and efficiency is a big part of that. And I'm going to let Cindy Jones talk a little bit about how our budget works at this time.
Food Services is financially self-supporting. All of our food, supplies, labor, our different utilities, our trucks, everything is paid for out of our food service funds. We have three sources of revenue. We have our state reimbursement, our federal reimbursement, and our customer food sales. This is our second year after our new nutrition regulations. So, last year was a little bit of a challenge. We had additional costs in the training of our staff and also additional food waste. This year, our staff and our students better understand the new regulations, and so we're looking for a break-even year. Our highest source of revenue is our student sales, followed by our federal funding. Because we are food services, our highest expense is our food, followed by labor. Each year, we all renew our commitment to making sure that all of our students are fully prepared for academic success. And as we all recognize, hungry children cannot learn. So, our first step is ensuring that all of our students begin their school day with a nutritious breakfast. That's why we're very excited about a new program we started this year called the Universal Breakfast in the Classroom. All students at these sites receive a free breakfast. It doesn't matter if they're free, paid, or reduced. At lunch, at breakfast, they are all free. The way we can fund this program is it is federally funded in the same way that all of the rest of our programs are funded. We receive a small amount of reimbursement for our paid students and higher amounts for our free and our reduced. Because of this, we can only have it at sites that have a very small amount of paid students. We began this program this year at four sites: Central, Fairview, Ridgeview, and Westview. Yesterday, we began our fifth site at Washington. These meals all must meet our government nutritional guidelines, just like the rest of our breakfasts. So, each day, our staff goes in and they prepare the breakfast and they load it into the rolling bags. Then, a member of the school staff pick up the bags and they roll them onto the classroom. So, when our students arrive, their breakfast is waiting for them. We were also fortunate to receive some additional funding from a grant from Midwest Dairy. With that money, we were able to purchase all of our rolling bags, milk coolers for each one of our sites, and also prep tables. We also received some additional funding from General Mills in which we were able to purchase a freezer. So, as you can see, the participation at all of our sites has at least doubled. We also have received great comments from our students and our staff. An example is Trey, one of our students. He said, "I think it's a good way to get a nutritional balance to start the day, and it feels really nice to sit down and have breakfast with my friends." Jessie, another student, said, "Breakfast gets you energized, up and running." And then John Bell, our principal at Westview, said, "Last year, we had a huge tardy problem, and because of our universal breakfast, we have one or two tardies a day. Our kids are also able to focus on school throughout the morning because they have full bellies." Oops. So, as I said, we've had great comments, and so we are very excited about our universal breakfast in the classroom. And now Lori's going to share with you what's happening in HR.
Well, with being the largest restaurant in Olathe, as Scott stated earlier, spread out across 54 different locations, and having a customer base of about 28,000 students plus daily, you have to have people. And that's kind of where I come in. What I'd like to do is share just a few of the highlights and things that we're doing to help set our employees up for success every day. And I believe that that starts basically at the onboarding process, when we first interview that particular candidate. In food services, I keep, in food services, we actually bring everybody onboard as a sub to start with, and we do that for a number of different reasons. It does allow employees to go out and work in an elementary, work in a middle school, work at a high school, and really decide which level they prefer to be at. They come in thinking they want to be at one particular level, but not really knowing without having, going out and working in. And each school, as I say, has also its own little personality, based on the people that work there. So, by being a sub, they have an opportunity to go in and work and kind of get to know whether or not I want to be part of this team, or does it drive me crazy every day and I don't want to go to that school? And so, I don't want to place somebody at a school where it's going to be a bad match. And probably most importantly, by bringing people onboard as a sub, it allows us to send those employees out to the schools to be trained. And we've actually identified several schools that we've indicated as training schools, because most of what we do is training on the job. Based on information that we received from our trainers out at those schools, last year, we determined that there was a need for some training prior to them going out to the schools even. And so, we implemented and developed a training program that we do at the Food Production Center at the same time that they come in for their food services orientation, basically where we're getting them set up to start as a new employee. In addition to that, our new employees also attend district orientation. And we really struggled with getting our employees to that district orientation, because a lot of times, it's on days when students are in school, and we need people at the schools feeding the kids. So, in partnership with Dr. Letcher and Denise, we were able to identify a couple of non-student days this year that we now can send our food services staff to district orientation. So, they still are oriented to the district, and still a part of that, yet it doesn't put us in a situation where we're struggling trying to figure out how are we going to get these kids fed? And in addition to that, it's also saved us quite a bit from a labor expense, because we're not having to pay a sub to backfill a spot where somebody is scheduled to work. Additionally, this year, one of our field supervisors has now been approved to present our Food Safety Basics training. And that Food Safety Basics training is a requirement of all of our KSDE. There's a requirement of KSDE, and all new employees have to have that within six months of starting, or they can no longer continue to work. Plus, getting that training early explains a lot of why we do the things that we do in food services, that you look at and go, "Why is it that I have to wash my hands this certain way every single time?" There's reasons behind that, and that Food Safety Basics class helps support the reasons behind a lot of those things. In addition to that, the training kind of continues. So, it's not just something that we do when we have a new employee that starts with us, but we continue to train people throughout. We have our beginning-of-the-year all-staff meeting, and at that time, we do a lot of the required training that the district likes, and we cover ethics and diversity at that time. Monthly, I meet with our secondary managers, because a lot of our employees have been promoted from within into management-level positions and may or may not understand some of the compliance issues that now they have been handed those responsibilities. And so, we cover things like harassment training, and how do you identify that? Or what do you do if an employee comes to you and says that they feel like they're being harassed? Performance management. How do I write a corrective action? How do I discipline somebody or hold them accountable? And then, we also do things about employee engagement, because we want people who are passionate about what they do. So, we try to really encourage, what do we do to engage our employees to where they're giving us more? Because these, quite honestly, are not high-paying positions. They've got to want to be there. We also focus on lunch aid training, and that came with the new regulations. Or whenever we have a new lunch aid, we have training that takes place there. And then, this year, we had to also do emergency safety intervention training and some Hascom training. So, we've been doing a lot of training this year. And special diets, I know Nicole's going to talk a little bit more about that. But special diets training, obviously, we have to have staff that are trained and know how to handle those meals, because we've got those kids, their safety on our hands. So, we make sure our staff are comfortable with that. And then, finally, with food services also comes work-related injuries. These are physically demanding jobs. And one of the things that I've been doing, I am part of the Safety Committee for the District, and so, we do meet monthly with Denise Carpenter. And we're really proud this year. We've really been working hard on the Return to Work program and getting injured workers back to work and accommodating those restrictions. And I know Denise, even just earlier today, because we had a meeting, commented on the fact that, you know, this has been very successful for us. We have a lot of very unique jobs, and we have that ability to accommodate injured workers where in other areas it may not work. And so, this year, we've had two food services employees that we've accommodated their restrictions, and we've had four custodial employees who've come over and worked for us, because they can't necessarily do all their custodial responsibilities, but we have work that they're able to do. And that's an estimated savings of about $587 per week, per employee. So, that has a direct impact on our workers' comp. Something I'm really proud about this year, in particular so far, and knock on wood, I don't want to jinx it, but this is kind of our claims history since 2010, and these are just claims. And as you can see, we were kind of on an upward trend there. And this year so far, we've had six workers' comp claims. And so, we're really proud of that. And to go along with that, which hits the bottom line, is that incurred cost. So, as you can see, back in 2010, and I will say that one claim alone took us up that high. And anyway, so this has trended downward, and this year, we're at $4,000 compared to $221,000 three years ago. So, we're real proud of that. And part of that's just based on awareness, communicating with employees, talking about safety, making them aware of those potential hazards and what's going on within the workforce, and making sure that we're just being a little more careful and maybe not trying to do things too quickly. We have a lot of burns. Trying to avoid those. And with that being said, I am going to turn it over to Nicole. She's going to talk to you guys about the nutritional side of things.
Okay. Just a few slides to kind of go through my section of what happens over in FPC and the nutrition and menu planning portion of our area. As I've mentioned, we do have quite a few guidelines that we have to follow. We have our federal, state, as well as district wellness and nutrition guidelines that we need to follow. I kind of gave you just a listing of the things that I have to meet. Some of those guidelines, I'm not going to go through all those. Just want you to have those, so you're aware it's not just making sure we have an entree in milk and a fruit and vegetable. There's a lot more that goes into that to be in compliance with those guidelines. I think something that needs to be shared, sometimes as a parent, I've looked at menus for my children and went, "Hmm, that's an interesting combination of foods. I wonder why they put that together." Or, "Wow, I thought we didn't have fryers in our schools, and yet, I'm seeing things that I would customarily, southern fried chicken, something along those lines, that looks kind of like something that should be fried." I want to make sure you know that the food that we purchase is specifically designed for school food service. So, they're reduced fat, they're added whole grains, they have different breading, different ways of being prepared. So, we no longer have fryers in any of our schools in order to do that. A lot of times, the portion size is different than what you would see. One example that a parent pointed out to me was wanting to know why we had Doritos and Cheetos on our menu. Our Doritos and Cheetos are different than what you would find at one of the convenience stores down the road. They're going to be a reduced-fat version, a whole grain, as well as the portion size much smaller, and they count towards our grain components instead of being thought of as that, maybe that junk food that we pick up on the way. So, want to keep that in mind when you're looking at your menus. We do, in Olathe Public Schools, have unlimited servings of fruits and vegetables and encourage our students to take advantage of that, and most of them do. We only serve chocolate skim milk and 1% white milk. All of our guidelines do have certain portion sizes in them. So, our elementary, middle, and high school students have different amounts, even though they might have, they might all have meatball sub on the menu for that day. They're all going to have a little bit different amount served to them based on their age group. Part of planning, the menus also involves the students themselves. We have had the opportunity, because of some upcoming new guidelines that we're going to adopt. We've been in the schools quite a bit, particularly this last fall, taste-testing some new products and getting their opinions and seeing what they like and don't like, and seeing how they fit into the menu. And then, of course, Nutrition N is a portion of my position in partnership with our classroom teachers and doing health fairs, as well as during the day classroom education. Kind of some things that I wanted to point out. I'm new. I started in July. As an RD, I did know a few of these things. I knew from my experience in food service, I'd have to worry about labor costs and food costs, and of course, the nutrition guidelines. Coming into this, there's some other limitations and challenges that I have to think about in doing these menus that I didn't know I had to do. We have very small kitchens in a lot of our schools. And so, thinking about how much food I can get on the truck, as well as how much can be stored in that fridge or freezer that is in that space. And so, sometimes, there are foods that, yeah, that would be nice to have with that day, but there's just no room to have another frozen item, because we have no room in the freezer left. So, things like that, I had not thought of until I started doing these menus. Also, you know, as I mentioned, the student preferences, and those change from year to year. And keeping on top of those and making some of those adjustments. So, you will see some traditional items, like the forever chili and cinnamon roll, I think, has been on the menu. We often joke, "Why?" Chili and cinnamon roll go well together, and everybody thinks the school food for that reason. That's still on the menu, but you'll see lots of other new items as our students' preferences change. And then, as was mentioned earlier, a large portion of my job now is on special diets. So, I want to talk a little bit about the special diets in our student population. These are medically restricted and have to have proper documentation in order for us to work with them and make these adaptations. We do provide on the website nutritional analysis and ingredient labels for every food that we serve. So, some of our students are able to do all of the adaptation that they need to by just looking at the website, and they don't need any special modification to their diet. Others, of course, will. Something that was a little surprising to me, we have over 60 students that are considered special diets, and a significant number of them are gluten intolerant. That does not include the peanut and nut allergy, because all of our elementary schools are peanut and nut-free automatically. The nurses, thankfully, at the schools, take care of any of those. But none of our food has the potential of being a challenge for them. So, there would still be those peanut and nut allergies on top of the gluten-free. We have quite a significant number of diabetic diets that, we don't necessarily have to do a lot of modification, but we work in partnership with school nurses in order to make sure that they're receiving the food that they're supposed to and the medication to go along with it. And then, we also have what we call mechanically modified. So, we do have about a dozen puree, ground, and chopped diets. And so, that's working with classroom teachers, making sure that those foods are being provided. A lot of the that education was new to me. I work with OT, PT, school nurses, classroom teachers, in a collaboration to work on the feeding and swallowing team and being able to provide those students with those particular diets. And then, just kind of upcoming for our area, we do have some other guidelines that are part of the Healthy and Hunger-Free guidelines that came out last year. Also introduce whole grains. All of our foods will have to be whole-grain-rich by next year. We're almost there. I think I can count on one hand the few items that are not whole-grain at this point. And most of those items, we're testing new products. The products are available. We just have to get student preference, and there's probably one or two manufacturers that will have to make a decision on which one the students prefer on those. Sodium targets are going to, they're going to be, continue to restrict those as we go through the years. The first level to be introduced will start this next coming year. We are already onboard with the menus this year. We don't exceed any of those for any of our levels. So, we're there. It'll be the levels two and three that will, you'll see some, you'll have to see some much larger changes in our menu in order to comply. And then, finally, something you may have heard about. It's been in the media a little bit. We've been doing some talking at the school or the Wellness Committee recently as far as what's known as all food sold in schools, also known as the new vending guidelines or the à la carte guidelines. It goes by some different names, depending on who's talking about it. We don't have a final guideline yet. We were hoping that it would come before now, but it has not. So, we're going off of the initial draft that's out there and making some changes and anticipating what we might need to do to make those changes. For us, that will be a significant difference in à la carte. This now applies to everything that's sold in the school. So, we're talking the vending machines and the fundraising, if they're doing it during school hours. And so, there's some things that we'll be working with building staff in order to make sure that we're in compliance with that. So, with that, I think we're done, and open it up to questions.
Happy to answer any questions.
I have a question about the workers' compensation charts. Lori, is that a school year or calendar year?
That is actually like the 2010 school year. So, it's fiscal year as opposed to calendar.
Scott, can you give us some guidelines on why the five Title I schools are getting free breakfasts and the other schools are not?
Yeah, that's basically just number crunching. As Cindy had mentioned, it really only works in schools that have a very low number of paid students. And we like to see about 75% free or reduced at that school to make the numbers work out. So, we can at least break even.
That's because of the federal guidelines, the reimbursement?
No, the reimbursement's the same reimbursement as we get for a regular breakfast. We just crunch numbers and figure out where the break-even point is on those reimbursement amounts.
So, basically, we do those five schools because they're at the 75%, and we can't do the other ones?
Correct. And as those percentages change, we would, if this continues to be successful, as it appears it is, we would continue to add more schools.
And how does it work in the schedule of the day? Do they have it in their classroom, or do they go to the cafeteria twice? How does that?
Cindy should actually be answering this. She's actually the one that came up with this idea and oversaw the process. But because all the kids are coming in the morning at the same time, the cafeteria certainly isn't large enough to accommodate everyone at the same time. So, it is breakfast in the classroom. So, when the kids come to school, the breakfast is there in their classroom for them.
We heard some anecdotal evidence that tardies are down in schools, or at least one of the schools, whereas the breakfast is served. I assume that we're keeping track of that kind of information, and I'd like to get a report back, maybe after we've done this for a year.
Yeah, that will be interesting to see. And of course, all the tardies and... And of course, all the TARDIS and everything is tracked each year. But at the end of the year, we'll be interested to see that, and we can report back the changes that we've seen.
I think philosophically, we had all agreed that a student who has breakfast is going to perform better academically in the classroom. Is there any way to quantify that?
I suppose there is, test scores. But again, we don't have that data.
That's probably not your department, maybe that's better directed to Dr. Banekowski in teaching and learning.
I think that it would be difficult for us to look at data within our district since, for example, with the breakfast program, all the students can't have the free breakfasts. There's no control or comparison group. But the research data would indicate that students who do not have appropriate nutrition don't have as good of attention to their academics. So, there would be a body of research that we would be able to draw from. Looking at our own specific data might be a little bit more challenging.
I think that would be good information for all parents to have. And I asked this question in advance, and I got a response here. And I think there were like up to 15 different criteria that were kind of, would indicate that breakfast was a positive thing. I would like to see that somehow put out on our website, what was sent to the board, all that information. I think it'd be good for parents to see and say, wow, it'd be good for me to make sure my child gets a good breakfast before they go to school.
We're very diligent about talking about that, especially around assessment times, about how important nutrition is prior to those activities.
Could we get that out on the website?
Be glad to work with Maggie and others to.
All right, to get that information that you sent to the board out, I think it'd be good for the public. I also noticed that the state reimbursement had been 0.45%, which is like 1% of the budget, is that correct? And it's been the same reimbursement for the past 30 years. Has there been any discussion or any talk with our legislators about maybe increasing that, like maybe 0.05 or something?
It's pretty amazing, isn't it? Cindy Jones actually is the School Nutrition Association of Kansas Legislative Chairperson. And she had shared with me that that's something that had been brought to legislators on a regular basis up until the climate in Topeka changed with the financial position. So, they haven't brought it forward recently, just because they could take it away. We're not sure that we want to raise that issue and be bringing their attention to that. But once things change in Topeka, that certainly will be something that we're asking for. The association also continues to ask for reimbursement for breakfast. We don't receive any reimbursement for breakfast, only lunch. And it's interesting that breakfast is mandated, that we have breakfast, but there isn't a reimbursement to go along with that.
Sounds familiar.
Any other questions? Thank you very much for a very interesting presentation. We appreciate it. All right, we're going to move on now to our action consent items, 5.01 through 5.07. Comments or questions? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I would move to approve consent agenda items numbered 5.01 through 5.07 as presented.
Actually, I was a little slow in the draw there. I do have kind of one comment question about our financial treasures report that we all received today. I sent an email to Dr. Barry, and I don't know if he's prepared to maybe speak on this for a minute. But I don't know if you noticed, we ran our contingencies down to zero. And I think we ran our operating funds down to about $100,000. And I just think it's worth maybe a comment for the sake of the public to understand how close we run these numbers, because the budget's tight and how there's just no room for error on the part of our.
Let me give a little explanation, and John can back me up if I need to. But I was going to make comments about that, and so, a little bit later. But this is a good spot since it is the financial report. As you know, we end our fiscal year at the end of June. We start up in July, and we have some carryover funds that get us started on the year. And food service would be one of those. They're allowed to carry over X number of dollars because we don't have student funds coming in to buy lunches in July and August until we start up school. So, we utilize some of our cash balances. Our cash balances were down slightly last year, as you'll remember, from greater expenditures in special education. And then, we also had the adjustment in our early childhood programs in terms of funding for the district. So, that impacted our cash just a little bit. But then, think with me through the budget process. USA Board approve our budget in August. August 25th, it goes to the county treasurer. It gets certified, and then it gets applied against all of the valuations in our district. Tax statements go out. They're supposed to go out after November 1st, no later than December 15th. And then, counties across Kansas can pay their taxes either, depending on the county, in one payment, or you can pay in December, and then again in May, two payments. But the taxes then would be due either half or full in December. We don't get those dollars, the levies that you set in August, 69 mils, that local income that we expect to fund. We don't get the major part of that until January then. So, our lowest cash flow is in December. And as Amy Martin points out, that's the low point for us. And it'll become solvent again and contingency paid back. But we have to have those balances for cash flow as a business. And again, at various times, when legislature looks at those and cash balances, and why do districts have so much, they're necessary for cash flow. That help?
Very much, thank you. I'm sorry.
Then I would second Mr. McCune's motion.
Of a motion by Mr. McCune and a second by Ms. Martin to approve the consent agenda items 5.01 through 5.07.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Pollan?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Let's move on and see how many of our action bids, contracts, and agreements we can get through. So, the first one, 6.01, is the addition of Piper Jaffray to the investment institutions for the fiscal year 2014. Mr. Pollan, you look like you have a comment? All right.
I think this is worth a little bit of additional discussion. And John, yeah. From a layman's standpoint, I'm going to summarize the way I see it. Okay? We passed the bond issue. And as a board, we found, decided that we wanted to issue 190 million of it because of the interest rates at the time. And so, we issued that, and now we have cash. And the cash that we have, we're not generating much income. So, we found a way that possibly we can generate a little additional income from that cash until we need it. So, correct me, expand on it?
You're absolutely correct. I'll expand just a little bit. Each July, as you go through your organizational meeting, we have a list of banks that we put our idle funds into. And we also have a process throughout the year. As we're approached by institutions, the board can add to that list. This evening, you're adding Piper Jaffray. Piper Jaffray has a program. Obviously, they're very heavy into the bond business. So, they know that districts struggle, and they created a program in partnership with some financial institutions that meet all of the Kansas guidelines as far, for types of allowable investments. And it has a substantially larger return. I won't say it's huge because of the economy. But if we're getting 0.05, we can get considerably more in that program. So, we, the finance committee, agreed to bring forward and put them on the list that we could take those idle funds that are not currently being used in construction yet and invest those so we can get some return on it.
Thank you.
Is the return greater than what we're paying in interest?
It is not greater, so there is no arbitrage.
If there are no other questions, I would entertain a motion.
I'd move to approve the addition of Piper Jaffray to the approved investment institutions for fiscal year 2014 as presented.
Second. Oop. Do harm. Okay. A motion by Mr. Pollan and a second by Mr. Parker to approve the addition of Piper Jaffray to the approved investment institutions for fiscal year 2014.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Pollan?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Moving on to 6.02, the exciting concrete and asphalt bid for January 2014, the one I always look forward to.
I'll take that one.
All right.
Is there any reason we can't combine 6, 2, 0, 2, 3, and 4? Anybody want to discuss this?
Sounds like a good idea.
Okay, I'll move to approve, to accept the low bid for concrete and asphalt from J.J. Asphalt. That's 6.02. 6.03, the air filter bid, to accept the low bid from Air Filters Plus for air filters. And 6.04, trade bids for the elementary renovations. And that is to move to accept the bids listed in the bid summary for elementary renovations as presented.
Second. I'm not going to try to repeat all that. But I have a motion by Mr. McCune and a second by Ms. Felter to approve items 6.02, 03, and 04. Ms. Hibbs?
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Pollan?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
All right. 6.05 is the data storage solution for the Technology Support Center. Questions, comments?
I have a question in regards to this. I have to go back to the experience that we had when we implemented the software for our timekeeping thing. And that kind of grew out, like it was an elephant that grew and kept growing and kept growing. So, from a board member's perspective, I want some assurance that we're not looking at that kind of a situation with the storage one. Because I noticed that the Nimble bid is less than the other bids, but they're giving us free software. And their bid for insulation was $5,000, and integration, which was considerably less than the other vendors that were on the bid sheet. And that was exactly this problem that we had with the integration and implementation of the timekeeping software. So, I just need some assurance that these folks can deliver for what they said they can deliver at the price they said they can deliver it for, and we need that in writing.
Well, we have that in writing. Just to clarify, we're actually not getting the software free. It is bundled and included with the hardware. So, when you look at the bid pricing for the hardware, you'll see that the pricing for the Nimble hardware is right in line with the other vendors on their hardware. But they just market differently. They bundle their software and hardware differently, so that's packaged together. You're right, the installation and services price is much lower with Nimble. They have a much smoother, more streamlined way of implementing this package. We also have a lot of expertise within our own technology department that we're able to take advantage of. We're very comfortable with this bid price. They have come back in writing. This is a firm bid price. They will complete the project at that price.
So, they're not going to come back and say, oh, by the way, we made a mistake, and we need another?
They're not.
I'm sorry, we just had a big problem with the time thing, and it just kept coming back and coming back and coming back. And so, it was, all right, I'm okay with it.
Yeah, I totally know where you're going with that particular piece of software, and we've all lived with that pain for a long time.
I just don't think we should hear that again.
No. I'm very confident that we're fine with this one.
Thank you.
Do you feel confident enough to make a motion?
I do. I need to find my, I would vote to approve the motion for data storage solution to Nimble storage for $400,220, which includes five years of maintenance.
Second.
Was that Mr. Pollan?
Yes.
I have a motion by Mr. Parker and a second by Mr. Pollan to approve the data storage solution for the Technology Support Center. You see?
Mr. Pollan?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
All right, we'll move on and get 6.06 completed. And that is a motion to approve purchases of tablets and iPads. And I'm wondering if there may be some questions or comments? I knew it.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Ms. Lyon, when I was at the KSB convention, I went to two sessions that were on Chromebooks and Google Apps. And in both sessions, one was put on by Ford Hays, the other one by Cheney School District, they were talking about how much money they had saved by going with Chromebooks and Google Apps, most of which are downloaded free. So, as I looked at this this week, this bid for the iPads and the tablets, it made me ask the question, have we, and I think we owe this to our public, to owe them an explanation, because somebody out there, I'm sure, has a Chromebook, and I'm not sure what they cost, but they're significantly less than an iPad. And somebody's going to be saying, why did the school district not consider Chromebooks and Google Apps? So, I think that's a discussion that we need to have, and we need to have that for the benefit of the public. And I think, I know where you're going with this, but our public needs to hear that. We know that we've looked at that as an option.
We have looked at that as an option, and I'm glad you asked the question and brought it forward because it's important. We have looked at it as an option. We've bought a couple of books, tested them out. We will continue to look at it as an option. This purchase tonight is kind of to get us into phase one of this proof of concept. Chromebooks may come up in phase two and down the road as an option that teachers want to try out. We asked a lot of teachers' input, and gathered a lot of data from our staff. And Chromebooks was not included in not one of the technology action plans that came forward. They are a bit restricted on what the students can do with them. They are called Google Chromebooks for a reason. They're very tied to Google. But that's not all bad, and we will continue to look at those. They may very well come forward as something that we want to try in the future. This $600,000 that we're proposing tonight is part of the $10 million that was approved in the bond for student access. So, we've got a long way to go yet with devices, and that could possibly be one that we go with some of those in the future.
And I appreciate that. I really would like to encourage us to continue exploring that and continue looking at that as we go forward, if it becomes a possibility. I think there's some interface between the two. You can use tablets, and you can also use Chromebook on our system.
We don't want to tie ourselves to just one device. We want to make sure that we, different devices are appropriate at different levels. It may be that an iPad is best at the elementary level, laptop at the high school, and perhaps down the road, Chromebook at the middle level. So, we don't want to tie ourselves to one particular device. We want to make sure we're getting the right device in the right curricular area.
When I listened to the technology director from Cheney, he mentioned that he would initially got a lot of pushback from teachers because they would prefer an iPad. But once they got him in the classroom and started using him, and he was able to support them, they were in favor of that, and they became somewhat enamored with him. So, I don't think we should just scoot aside without us taking time to maybe have a teacher out there in the classroom say, hey, how would you like to try Chromebook for us one year?
We certainly are continuing to look at that. It's not out of the realm of possibility at all.
And we'll hear that. Back to the board. Thank you.
Help me understand. I suppose in my mind, I'm thinking that if we're allowing bring your own device or we're trying to head down that path, really, aren't we looking for applications that will run across several different platforms just so that we can take advantage of students who have their own device they can bring?
Absolutely. And with our Microsoft licensing, we'll be moving into the Office 365 arena very, very shortly, which is the Office product on the web that will be available to all staff and students. That's a product that we get free with our, free with our Microsoft licensing. So, any student with any device that can get to the web will be able to use that, no matter what the device is. So, certainly, we've got, we've still got a lot of work ahead of us. There's a lot out there. But certainly, we're looking at not only the device, but the applications that best suit the curricular area at the least cost that we can make work.
So, it could end up that when this is all said and done, we're 50/50, or 30/30/30, or something like that?
We could be 20/20/20/20. I mean, you know, it's, and that's a challenge for technology. Because when you have all of these different platforms that you have to support, making sure that the filtering is there, the security is there, you've got virus protection on all of this. It appears that there's some new regulations coming down with the CIPA laws, the Child Internet Protection Act. So, all of those things have to be considered with all of these different devices that you're going to have to support. And we run a pretty slim staff in our area. So, we not only want to make sure that they're best in the classroom, we want to make sure that we can provide the support. best in the classroom, we want to make sure that we can provide the support for the teachers and students on those devices, too.
I'm going to approve the bid tonight. I'm in favor of it. But also, as I looked at this this week, I remembered a few years back, I approved a bid for Palm Pilots.
You did?
I think they lasted six months.
No, no, no. You know what, Mr. Parker?
All right.
We still have Palms in some classrooms.
All right.
And that started in 2003.
We still can utilize them.
We still have some of those out there. We have several teachers at elementary schools every August call and say, "Hey, I need to get these going again." And we send Connie Ru out of our department out, and she helps them get them going. Palm kind of died its own death, because the company itself went the way of the technology graveyard. So, we got a lot of use out of those, but unfortunately, the product itself didn't stabilize.
So, it seems like that we're preparing ourselves to be able to be Nimble and be able to move to other kinds of devices?
Very Nimble, that's right.
As they become available.
We'll see in five or 10 years whether we're talking this way about the iPad. Who knows?
I move to approve the purchase of 325 Microsoft Surface Pro 2 tablets with type cover for $312,354.25 from the Microsoft Store in Overland Park, Kansas, and to approve the purchase of 450 Apple iPads for $296,100 from Apple Incorporated.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Martin and a second by Ms. Felter for the purchase of tablets and iPads. Ms. Hibbs?
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Pollan?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
We will adjourn now for our comfort break and return at 7:00 PM. We are at that point in our agenda where we do recognitions and awards. Maggie, would you lead us?
Absolutely. Good evening. As you can tell by this packed house, we have numerous recognitions tonight. I'd like to welcome all of our distinguished guests. We're going to begin our recognitions tonight with a business partner. I'd like to ask Heather Schoonover from Community Development to come forward to help with this recognition. Tonight, we recognize the ExxonMobil's Olathe Plant, which has been a district and adoptive school partner for several years. The Olathe Exxon location is a grease plant that has dedicated corporate outreach to support science, technology, engineering, and math programs in local schools. ExxonMobil is a district partner that is connected at the secondary level with Indian Trail Middle School, as well as Olathe South High School. Funding has supported pre-engineering programs, science Olympiad teams, supplies in general science and math classes. The Indian Trail Chemical Cougars Club has benefited from the generous support to the middle school. Faculty and administration at the local schools have appreciated the annual support. Currently, Exxon has had a two-year commitment of allowing staff from the Olathe Plant to be Olathe youth mentors in our schools. The district's mentoring program has benefited from Exxon employees being one-on-one mentors with students, as well as career mentors to students interested in the areas of science, technology, engineering, and math. It is our honor to express sincere appreciation for the financial and volunteer dedication to the Olathe Public Schools. I'd like to ask Quinton Dunford and Dan McClinton from ExxonMobil to come forward, as well as Indian Trail Middle School Principal Becky Verbus, Indian Trail Science Lead Teacher Doug Geisler, Olathe South Principal Phil Clark, and Olathe South Science Chair Steve Schultz. Thank you for all you do for our students. Next, we'd like to recognize an Olathe Northwest student who had great success at the State Gymnastics Meet. Would Jessie Payne please come forward, along with Assistant Principal and Athletic Director Jay Novacek, and Gymnastics Coach Julie Thomas-Baya? Jessie won the Kansas State Championship in three events at the State Gymnastics Meet in October. She took first in the all-around competition, as well as the vault and uneven parallel bars. Jessie's accomplishments helped lead Olathe Northwest to a second-place finish at the State Gymnastics Meet. Congratulations, Jessie. And Jessie, is your family here tonight? If so, we'd love for them to stand and be recognized as well. Next, we will honor the e-communication program from Olathe Northwest High School. I'd like to ask the following staff members to come forward, along with Olathe Northwest Assistant Principal Jay Novacek, go back up there, Mark Olson, Andy Nederfeld, Court Allam, Blake Revel, Cynthia Loftquist, and Anna Lynn Morris. The Olathe Northwest e-communication program was recently formed, and it has been renewed as an Apple Distinguished Program for 2013 to 2015, a two-year designation. The program has been congratulated on its continued recognition as an exemplary learning environment for innovation, leadership, and educational excellence. According to the designation, the administration and faculty in the e-communication program have shown they demonstrate the five best practices of an Apple Distinguished Program: visionary leadership, innovative learning and teaching, ongoing professional learning, compelling evidence of success, and a flexible learning environment. This is the fourth time the program has been given this designation. Congratulations. Thank you very much. Our next recognition honors two groups of students for their outstanding accomplishments. Science City and Burns &amp; McDonnell earlier this school year sponsored a Battle of the Brains competition for students in the Kansas City metro area. The competition was designed to inspire projects around science, technology, engineering, and math. Students from Olathe East Environmental Design and Olathe North Distinguished Scholars Science Programs were named finalists in the competition. The Olathe East 21st Century Environmental Design Program received a $2,500 grant for being finalists. They are led by instructor Barbara Nakummanesh, and this is the second time the environmental design students have been finalists in this competition. I'd like to ask the Olathe East students to come forward to be recognized, along with their teacher and their principal, Bill Weber. I also want to add their instructor, David Lee, is here as well. Congratulations. Next, we'd like to recognize the students from the 21st Century Distinguished Scholars Science Program at Olathe North. Their entry, Tapped Out, was named the overall secondary winner in the Battle of the Brains competition. They were awarded a $50,000 grant to support science, technology, engineering, and math education in their school. This is the second time this group has won the grand prize in this competition. In addition to the grant, Tapped Out has been selected to be constructed as a new exhibit at Science City Union Station, as was their previous winning project, Unplugged. I'd like to ask David Morford, Olathe North Principal, instructors Rhonda Rice and Amy Johnston, along with the winning students, to come forward and be recognized. Congratulations. Rhonda, would you like to say a few words at all? Surprise stands next to me. Amy, please come forward.
I just want to thank everybody in the Olathe area and in the district that, for years, has kind of looked at some of the things we want to do and say, "That seems a little crazy," and let us do it anyway. And let me tell you, what I've told the people at Burns &amp; McDonnell, and what I've told the kids, and the kids really believe this, the last time, it was incredible to win this. And we thought this would be really neat, and we need a new exhibit at Science City. But what the students learned, working with the engineers, the band that graduated last year that worked the year and a half to do the design, there is no internship in a high school that is like that, because we thought they'd be the poster kids, and then they'd take a design, and it would show up. They worked with the kids. We had meetings. They would call the kids directly, and, "Did you think this needs to enter from the left or the right side?" And they were down there in hard hats, working. I mean, when those kids would show up at Burns &amp; McDonnell, and people would recognize them and call them by first names, and said, "Oh, I'll email this or that to you," it was incredible. And on the way to the awards ceremony that day, we were saying, "It would be so neat to win again, because we're going to miss, and our kids are going to miss, the great people at Burns &amp; McDonnell and at Science City." So, I wanted this win, not because I wanted to win, but I wanted to be able to give the kids that opportunity again. So, this bunch, I think, saw what the other bunch did and really went after it. So, the kids that did this last time, every one of them got huge amounts of money for college. All 12 of them got into one of their top-three schools, almost all paid for. And it was because they could talk about this. And so, it was, it's a nice thing, it's a nice win, but it's the opportunity for what it gives the kids that is just really real life, because now they've been hired as consultants for the firm. So, thank you, everybody, and thank you, Olathe and the school board.
And thanks for voting.
And everybody thanks for voting. And we were a little worried when we saw some stuff from East. We were like, "Dang it, that looks really good." And then we thought, "Okay, Mark's got to work on our sketchup a little more." Anyway, thank you very much, and hopefully, you know, it'll do the same for that bunch that it did for the last. So, thank you very much.
Next, we'd like to recognize Eric Arazo, Olathe North High School Hispanic Student Advisor. Eric, if you could come forward, along with Director of Instructional Support Programs, Jan Heinen, and Olathe North Principal David Morford. Eric was the recipient of the City of Olathe Human Relations Commission 2013 Educators Award. The award recognizes individuals for meritorious service in the pursuit of fostering accessible communities, promoting cultural diversity, and advocating human rights which benefit all Olatheans. Eric advises students on making good choices and helps facilitate several schools Hispanic leadership clubs. Congratulations, Eric. And Eric, I know your family is here tonight. We'd love for them to stand and be recognized as well. Thank you. Our next recognitions tonight honor teachers who recently worked toward their National Board certification. I'd like to ask Deputy Superintendent Dr. Allison Banikowski and Julie Miller, District Science Coordinator, who assists our teachers in their efforts towards certification, to come forward to help with this recognition. Three Olathe educators recently received the certification from the National Board for Professional Teaching Standards. National Board Certification is a professional achievement in which a candidate's teaching practice is measured against rigorous standards. It is a symbol of commitment to excellence in teaching. Thirty-four current Olathe teachers have attained this distinction. I'd like to ask the following individuals to come forward to be recognized for attaining National Board Certification. Sarah Mokel, third-grade teacher from Arbor Creek Elementary. Susan Bloom, Title I reading teacher from Washington Elementary. And Matt Petrie, science instructor from Olathe Northwest High School. This year, we also had three teachers go through the rigorous renewal process for their National Board Certification, to be renewed for another 10 years. I'd like to ask the following teachers to come forward to be recognized. Denise Larson, Title I reading teacher from Fairview Elementary. And Beth Pope, fourth-grade teacher from Benton Elementary. And Joanne Hyatt, math instructor from Olathe East, also earned her National Board Certification renewal, but could not be here tonight. So, we'd like to congratulate all of our National Board Certified teachers. Congratulations. Next, we'd like to recognize two Assistant Principals. Would Pioneer Trail Middle School Assistant Principals Elaine Carpenter and JJ Leibel please come forward, along with Assistant Superintendent Dr. Erin Dugan? Elaine and JJ were recently honored by the Kansas Association of Middle School Administrators. They were named 2013-14 Exemplary Middle School Assistant Principals of the Year. Carpenter and Leibel were two of five Assistant Principals honored this year, and they were honored for their outstanding effort that they give to their staff, students, and communities. Said Dr. Mike Walgas, their principal, Elaine and JJ are both outstanding educational leaders who bring to the position a mentality and approach of student-first. They have a passion for knowledge and continue to grow as models of being lifelong learners. Pioneer Trail and the Olathe School District are fortunate to have them as leaders working with our children. Congratulations. Thank you. And we do have one final special recognition tonight. I'd like to ask Dr. Barry to come forward to help with this.
We have over 4,000 employees in our district that serve many different roles, but we have a job description that you won't find on our Human Resources page. It reads something like this. Wanted: Seven individuals willing to give up their Thursday evenings for four years or more to meet and help to guide the education of more than 29,000 students. They must be willing to read agendas and financial reports, prepare for meetings, and stay current on state and national education issues. They must be a good listener and be willing to accept emails and phone calls at the least convenient time. They must be able to explain school budgets, federal programs, and why the superintendent called school off when it didn't snow. They must be supportive of activities for all students, even during cheerleader tryout periods. And they must be able to read maps and accept the challenge of boundary decisions. The compensation: The satisfaction of knowing they made a positive difference for staff and students. A sense of pride in legacy decisions that they helped to make, like grade-level reconfiguration, new construction of fifth high school, and safer facilities for all students. A sense of knowing that they are appreciated for their civic duty by our teachers, staff, and community. Tonight, we officially recognize a wonderful group of volunteers, our Board of Education, during Board Appreciation Month. Our school board members take their responsibility and public trust very seriously, dedicating an enormous number of hours to work both in and outside of board meetings. As a school community, we owe Dr. Debbie Daniels, Lyetta Felter, Rick Shear, Harlan Parker, Amy Martin, Mike Pollan, and Brent McCune a great debt of gratitude for their work. We thank you for your service to the students of our district. As a small token of our appreciation tonight, we have a framed piece of student art for each board member. This artwork was created by a fifth-grade Ridgeview Elementary Art This artwork was created by a fifth-grade Ridgeview Elementary art student.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you, and it's our honor and privilege to serve in this capacity. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy.
Buses, really?
That's beautiful.
It's awesome.
Wow.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Dr. Barry.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. It is now time for a public comment, so all of those of you who are politely standing in the back and who wish to leave, you may do so, or you may stay if you find us exciting.[969.56][969.56][laughter] You guys go home and study.[973.75][973.75][laughter]
I believe so, yes.
At each regular meeting of the Board of Education, we reserve limited time for individuals wishing to address the board. We request that individual speakers limit their comments to five minutes. The clerk will monitor the time and notify the speaker when the five-minute time limit has expired. Please direct your comments to the entire board. If a response is appropriate, the president will respond or refer to another individual. In an effort to respect the privacy, we ask that speakers refrain from discussing personal complaints involving individual staff members or students. Those speaking are advised that public comments are videotaped, recorded for broadcast on the district's educational access channel, and audiotape recorded as a matter of public record. Individuals addressing the board should come to the podium at the front of the room and state your name and address. Well, it got quite a bit smaller in here. If there's anyone who would like to address the board, now is your opportunity. Seeing none, then, we will move on. Next on our agenda are items 7.01 through 7.08, future action items. Do board members have any questions?
Sure.
All right.
Go ahead.
That would pertain to 7.06, 403B and 457 Provider.
Okay.
Just want to maybe ask a few questions, just keep it very brief. I don't know how versed all the board members are on this specific one, and I know that CBIZ has been brought in to evaluate the providers that we do have. I know we have a number of like 20, I think, currently, and CBIZ, I know, does an awesome job in what they do, but I guess I would just pose a couple of questions of concern that we would go to a single provider, and some of those concerns, one, do I, as a board member, do we as a board collectively have really any more fiduciary responsibility having a single provider versus three, or five, or 20? Just a question I raise. If you have an answer to that, fine, that just, it would be one thing I'd really want to know.
I wouldn't have an in-depth legal answer for you, but the concept of why you would have less fiduciary responsibility, as it's been explained to us, is just the administration of 20 different providers and exactly the analysis of the appropriateness of their investments and their practices and the like. But we're at a higher level, it really is just years ago, if you could get three people together and have a vendor for, and you could request to have a vendor for a payroll deduction to get into a 403B, and the law has changed and really said, "It's more than just a payroll deduction, you're really an employer offering a plan now," and so there's a responsibility that comes along with that, whether it's a stronger fiduciary responsibility when it's one versus 20. I really can't comment on, the fiduciary responsibility piece really came from the fact that it's no longer just viewed as, "We're just handling the money and it's a pass-through." It's now, you're really kind of administering a plan as a board. But I'd be happy to get more information on that.
Yeah, and I'd want to definitely study that a little bit more, too, and also just the, the increased participation factor. I'd kind of question that one, too. And I think it's a good thing that we're reviewing this. I think it needs to be. I think we need to offer the very best. Dr. Barry just mentioned there's 4,000 employees, but there's also hundreds and thousands of relationships that employees have with, maybe a personal advisor that they have currently. So I want to make sure that that's recognized.
Okay.
And I think that's really all I have at this point. I know I'll have some more.
Okay.
The time goes on.
I would, I would echo exactly what your sentiments were, Mr. McKeon, and just ask that we for sure incorporate feedback from our staff, our employees, on what their desire would be, as far as those relationships that are solid with financial planners that would be then excluded because of this change.
Dr. Barry, did you have any comments?
No. I would, I would, you know, second the sentiment of Mr. McKeon also. You know, I'm not an expert in this area by any means, and, but the input I've got is that, you know, that the fiduciary responsibility really has not changed a whole lot. And so that to proceed on that premise may not necessarily be as important as implicated. And, you know, I guess we, you know, we got input from one employee today, some of us did, I assume all of us did, as far as their, you know, feeling about it. I would, I guess, take this opportunity to encourage more employees to correspond to us board members, to give us their input. You know, the study I've, you know, as we all know, you can find studies to support any position you want to. I've seen studies that say that participation actually goes down because the, the level of expertise associated with the soup, or the advisors, really is, is not appropriate for the task that they're given, the fact that, that probably their compensation is determined on recruiting more new members rather than supporting the existing members. So I guess I would encourage employees to, you know, give us feedback, what they, what their thoughts are, because I think this needs a lot more responsibility, because we are talking about, what, four, six, 8,000 employees, people that have worked for us in the past and work for us now. So I would second the concerns that have been expressed so far.
I think it might be helpful for board members also to see more specific numbers, as far as how many employees are with each different group, that sort of a thing. And it'd be nice to benchmark what other districts are doing as well.
So it sounds like we'll be getting some additional information.
That's exactly why it's a future gen item, to give you the chance to even ask questions like that, so we'll certainly bring back more information.
Were there questions or comments about any of the other future action items? Seems scary to already be thinking about budget for 2014-15, but that's what it takes, right? All right. We also have written information from the Head Start Monthly Directors Report, and then moving on, topics for discussion. If there are any board members who have items they'd like to bring up, now's a good time.
I have one quick thing. I just wanted to let my fellow board members know that I'm going to be going to Washington, DC on February 2nd through the 4th with about 10 other KASB regional directors for an NSBA Advocacy Institute Weekend Week. It'll be two days of training, followed by a day meeting with our representatives in Washington. I'm very excited to be doing that.
I'd just like to make a comment after, you know, the, the awards that were given, or the recognitions that were given tonight, is that just, once again, take great pride in the, in the association and the relationship our staff has with the community. You know, this, this association with Burns &amp; McDonnell, you know, that's $100,000. The last two years, we've gained from that. And, you know, you saw the passion of Rhonda Rice, you know, the teachers, the staff, the, you know, the support staff here, I just, you know, it brings a lot of pride to me, like a, like a, like a proud parent, you know, of everybody out there that, that, you know, that is associated with this, because, you know, this is, this is good things that are happening for our students. You know, we can take pride in it, but it's, it's our students that are taking, you know, getting the advantage of this. So I just want to commend everybody out there for a job well done. Thank you.
Any other comments? Dr. Barry, it's time for your superintendent comments.
I'll do it. This first one, I feel kind of like I'm back in grade school and show and tell, but the newest Kansas City Spaces magazine that has come out, and I think this is actually, I've seen at least three of our board members appear in this one.[1531.36][1531.36][coughs] But this current issue has a picture, if you can see it, of Brent [laugh] McKeon about the fact that he gives blood. Takes time, every 50, 60 days, to take time off and give blood back to the community in terms of what an impact it has for others, but kind of a neat picture there. And again, I think I've seen Amy Martin and Harlan Parker and others appear in this magazine, so that's pretty special, so.
I'd like to point out, too, if you just go back another three or four pages, there's actually a picture of a recipient of a child that has received the blood, which I think is very special, too.
Cool.
I was impressed with how high you were off the ground in that little leap.[1566.73][1566.73][laughter] Today, the State Department of Education from Topeka announced the Horizon Award winners. These are first- and second-year teachers across the state of Kansas who are recognized for exemplary teaching. Takes an application and references and so forth that you have to put in to do this. They only named 32 teachers across the state of Kansas, and we had two today that actually get called to the office. We don't tell them why, they get called to the principal's office. It's under some other pretense, and at some point, we're interrupted by a phone call, and it's the Commissioner of Education who personally congratulates them for gaining this award. But Lauren Noffler, a second-grade teacher at Regency Place Elementary, and Hillary Riggle, who is a math teacher at Indian Trail, were both named Horizon Award winners. They are now part of a Kansas Exemplary Educators Network and get to go to all kinds of wonderful learning opportunities and so forth that are provided. So really special that our district. The commissioner said, "Marlon, I don't think there's any other districts, maybe, that have a secondary in an elementary winner today." So it's special for the Olathe district. So they'll be recognized later in February in Topeka, so that's pretty neat. Also want to make the announcement, and it's coming out through Dr. Banikowski, that we're offering our Citizens Education Academy again. This is a chance for people from our community to come in and learn more about the school district. It's streamlined a little bit more this year because we, it seems like people are very interested, but it's hard to commit sometimes, so we've tried to go a little bit longer on the night, but a fewer nights, maybe. So there are three sessions in February, followed up by coming to a board meeting on March 6th, so you'll get to meet those people that will sign up for this. So again, if you know somebody that's interested, send them our way. Always like to share what's happening at the state level, and we are sitting on top of the next legislative session. Will kick off this next week, and so we're excited. One of the key things will be the Governor's State of the State Address, which will be next Wednesday evening, and normally, he will lay out what the budget looks like and key issues, and so we're excited to hear that. We're also expecting the Supreme Court decision. I talked to somebody yesterday who talked to the attorneys who are part of the lawsuit. One of them said it could be as early as Friday. The other said it could be a year. So it'll be someplace in between there, probably.[1704.23][1704.23][laughter] But again, there are a lot of things happening. I'm going to leave an article, copy of an article tonight that maybe you have seen and maybe you haven't. It's a New York Times editorial about Kansas and the Supreme Court case, and there are a number of other states and legislatures and school systems across the country who are also involved in litigation, and they're really looking to the Kansas case. It's going to be, obviously, the latest happening across the country in terms of litigation like this, so it's going to have a big impact, not just in Kansas. And the last thing I want to mention to you is about the Mill Creek Center. It seems like it's gone quickly from when, when we faced that decision of where we're going to sell it or not. The thing that we heard very clearly was, "Come up with a master plan. Let's not go in and do little bits, this and that. Let's do it right. Let's do a master plan." We are within a week, I think, of getting that master plan, and we would probably like to see about bringing you in in small groups to start to brief you on the possibilities of what can be done at Mill Creek. That's what I have tonight.
All right. Any questions for Dr. Barry? I believe that we no longer have a need for an executive session. Is that correct? I know you're really sad.
Must be a KU game tonight again.
I know that was last time.[1781.11][1781.11][laughter] All right, so given that, we are ready to adjourn. Holy moly, it's 7:33. Wow, we are adjourned.[1791.15][1791.15][applause]